Twenty. I'm going to call the meeting to order for the November seventh, two thousand twenty four, six thirty P. M. Council meeting. And just to a little bit of order or to catch up at five thirty, we had a council work session scheduled, but because of the weather, we are going to put that off until our next meeting. So Suzanne, would you please do roll call?
Mayor Case.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Nakai.
She's on mute.
Okay, I know she's I can attest that she's here. Council member.
I hear.
Council member Baldwin is absent. Is recovering from surgery. Council member gear.
Here.
Council member Harvey.
Here.
Council member Jones.
Here.
Council member Smith.
Present.
Thank you.
All right. Eric's going to put a flag up on the screen for us and we'll do the pledge. If everyone would join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance.
The flag. Of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. For all.
Thank you. That takes us to three A ceremonies, presentations and appointments. Congratulations. I'm sorry, three A, we are going to put that off till the next meeting as well. We've rescheduled it so he did not have to come out in the weather as well. Moving on to item four additions, deletions or corrections to the agenda Suzanne. Do we have any?
Yes, ma'am. This evening we are having, we will have a deletion to the agenda. We will be removing item nine B. The applicant, their file was not complete enough for me to be able to bring this to council yet. So hopefully by the November twenty first meeting, they'll have completed their file and we can move forward. But this is coming up the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Item five A is approval of the October seventeenth, two thousand twenty four regularly scheduled city council meeting minutes. Item B is approval of a master service agreement between the city of Woodland Park and Respac for the permitting of access points and road design for the proposal, proposed reservoir in the amount of three fifty six, three hundred and fifty six thousand one hundred and ninety one dollars. Item C is approval of a proposal between the city of Woodland Park and Vivid Engineering Group for the geotechnical investigation of the dam site and the secondary access point construction for the proposed reservoir in the amount of five hundred and twenty two thousand two hundred and ninety four dollars. Item D is approval of the September two thousand twenty four statement of expenditures and authorize the mayor to sign warrants and payment thereof. And item E is approval of to purchase a multi hog from the hardline equipment for one hundred and sixty four thousand twenty seven dollars and forty nine cents. Any of those counsel that you'd like to take off and address individually, or can I get a motion for all of them? For the consent calendar.
May I?
Yes. George.
Yeah, thank you. So we we know about the reservoir one, I guess. And these are all budgeted items, right, Aaron? You you mentioned that before.
Yes, so the multi hog was unbudgeted, but I did act it in when I did the year in projections for twenty four.
Okay.
That's why I'm bringing it back to you now so that you all can approve it because it's over the fifty thousand dollar threshold.
Right.
Steve.
I would like to say, you know, with that, that Aaron had budgeted for unexpected such. And I'm very happy about that because it will be included. So, you know, any motions made, I'd be very willing to accept.
Anyone else have any questions on anything? Can I get a motion, please? To approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as is.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Suzanne.
Bates.
Yes.
Nakai.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, counsel. Item six is public comment for items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone Suzanne?
We do, we do. And Eric is going to help me as I call these individuals and promote them so they could speak. The first speaker this evening is Scott Tally. Scott, are you, yes, I see Scott there. And we'll just give us one second and we'll get Scott up so he can speak.
Thank you. Scott, if you could give us your full name and your city of residence, please.
Hello.
Hi.
Scott Tally, City of Woodland Park. I just like, can you guys hear me okay? I just like to address a few of the council members about their continued lies and personal attacks against our school district and the so called affiliation between merit and Charis. They are clearly misinformed. And I've heard the lies that you and others have continued to spew that it was all Charis members standing on the street corners opposing two way. I was out there holding signs along with many other parents who had no affiliations with Charis at all. I was holding that sign not only as a proud Panther, which I am, class of ninety seven, but also as a merit bear parent. And let me be the first to say, I have zero affiliation with Charis. Have never attended a class at Charis, but do love their wonderful Christmas show and nativity scenes that they put on for our community every year. The no on two A group was made up of parents and taxpaying citizens, including Panther and merit parents who didn't want to see our schools face a financial deficit hurting all of the kids just to get back at three or four board members and a superintendent. You were literally trying to demonize a Bible college and a school district in the town as if it's burning down our city. Even though I have no affiliation to Charis at all, I'm tired of all the hate you spew towards them. And it's also the same level of hate you spew towards Merit Academy and their families. There are the same families that live in our community and made this choice for their families because they believe it's the best choice for them. Many of these families in our district also send their kids to other schools within the district because some of the schools fit their kids' learning and social styles better. As a public official, it is disgraceful to demonize these parents, taxpayers and citizens because of their school of choice, the church they want to attend, where they took a class, a Bible class at a local college. Charis students bring a level of diversity to our community that I welcome. They come from all over the country and the world and bring with them a set of diverse backgrounds and values that we should strive to achieve in a small town. It appears people in our town with their coexist bumper stickers only appreciate different ideologies, races and backgrounds if those individuals think like them. Wake up and realize that you are creating the division in this community. Take a lesson from our kids and realize that our schools have never done better because of our choices, diversity and differences, not despite them. Take care of city business and get the city's affairs in order. No one has appointed you as the watchdog of all government agencies in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Speaker number two is Leanna Tally. So we'll do, we can have Leanna come up, Leanna's right there.
Hi, Leanna, could you give us your full name and your city of residence, please?
Yeah, Leanna Tally, City of Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I want to begin by thanking the citizens of Woodland Park for choosing to support our schools by voting no on two A. The schools are incredibly important and I'm just so grateful for our community standing behind them. A few weeks ago, as I was researching the city sales tax proceeds, I discovered that the city of Woodland Park is quite behind in publishing financial information. Considering that members of this council spent the entire summer and fall scorning the school district on the importance of accountability and transparency, the city's failure to demonstrate just that is, in my opinion, hypocritical. You have made the district jump through your hoops in a six month dog and pony show. You have wasted the time and money of our citizens, school officials and city administrators. Two months ago, my husband phoned the city roads and maintenance division to report a significant pothole in our neighborhood. They said because of equipment breakdowns and staffing shortages, roads are bad and hopefully they'd get to it out and get it repaired sometime soon, but still nothing. Because of this, I am desiring to dig a little deeper into what the city is spending its money on and I can't even get an idea because your records are not up to date. I am absolutely amazed that when I go onto the city of Woodland Park's government website and look at the city's financials, the monthly expenditures haven't been updated in seven months, not since March of two thousand twenty four. The quarterly financials have not been posted since two thousand twenty two. And the annual comprehensive financial report has also not been posted since two thousand twenty two. You have demanded the schools be held to a much higher standard than yourselves. This is the definition of hypocrisy and why no one has trust in government anymore. Some of you have forgotten who you work for. Instead of attacking a democratically elected school board preaching to them in the public about transparency, why not do your job in representing this town in favorable manner? You should be teaming up with the schools to showcase our improvements, draw attention to our amazing sports, academic achievements, after schools clubs and the different learning styles available to our parents and kids through school choice. Instead, you are trying to destroy our school systems by just defunding them and it's disheartening and concerning. As a taxpayer, I deserve to know how the city is spending my tax dollars. I look forward to your updated reports and the city showing the ethics of reciprocity by adhering yourselves to the rules you have placed on others. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else Suzanne?
Yes, ma'am, I have two more speakers. The next speaker.
Just a moment, hold on Carol.
Yes, I know we generally don't respond to comments in agenda item six. But if we could at the end of the speakers, if Aaron could address Ms. Tally's remarks about our our financial reporting, if anyone had looked at today's agenda and the package that went with it, they would have noticed that we had a quite detailed expenditure report. Thank you.
Thanks Carol. Go ahead Suzanne, sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. The next speaker is Gwen Petron. And I think I see Gwen there, Eric.
Gwen, if you'd give us your full name and city of residence when you join us, please.
Hey there Gwen. We just need you to unmute.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is Gwen Petron in Woodland Park. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. On the night council members were elected, there became a duty in this nonpartisan position to uphold the law, to make Woodland Park, Woodland Park again, and end a divide in this community. Mr. Gear noted that he did not want outside agenda to divide us by prioritizing their goals over ours. And by ours, that should mean our community. This is good. So what is the charge of this council? Elections are a great spotlight of communities value system that a supposedly nonpartisan council must follow. It requires that council members ensure that they are not leading with their own conflicting personal biases and agenda. Woodland Park's votes very much mimic Teller County's election results. For decades, the city of Woodland Park has held strong to the county votes. Since at least two thousand, this city and county voted anywhere between sixty five and seventy percent in favor of the Republican nominees for president, Congress and Senate. This year overwhelmingly, with at least a fifteen to thirty percent margin, this community proved again to be MAGA county, voting for President Donald Trump. With the same margins, this community continued their stance as pro life, voting no on amendment seventy nine. This community continued its fight for the Second Amendment, voting no on proposition KK. This community expanded its commitment to parent rights and education, voting yes for amendment eighty for school choice. This community supports law enforcement with a vote for police funding. This community supports our veterans, supporting property tax cuts for this population. This community supports our children, teachers and schools by voting no to retain school funding. This nonpartisan group of elected officials promised to represent the community, to not allow an outside agenda to divide this community. What if your agenda is the divisive outside agenda? The community you represent is pro life, pro Second Amendment, pro school choice, pro religious liberties, pro veterans, pro law enforcement. Yet we have council members who defame these very community values. I suspect if this race were partisan, several of you would not be seated here today. Amendment eighty passed here, two A failed by over one thousand more votes than any city council members received to be seated at this table. In fact, two A failed with two thousand eight hundred and ninety two votes. This support for our schools was more than any votes ever collected for either a district wide bond or city funding. Your oath is to uphold Colorado laws, which includes the Charter School Act, which defines the charter schools are public schools. Let me be clear, charter schools are actual public schools. The outright vitriol of public officials against over twenty seven percent of this district's population because of your own outside agenda against school choice is unacceptable. Your city council rules of procedure state, quote, honesty and honesty and respect for the dignity of each community member should be reflected in every word and action taken by council members, twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. It is a serious and continuous responsibility, unquote. This has been violated time and again. Thank you.
Thank you Gwen. Suzanne.
Our final speaker mayor is Mick Bates.
Good welcome Mick. If you could give us your full name and city of residence, please.
There he is. Mick, can you hear us?
He's not on the, oh, there he is.
There we go. You just have to unmute Mick.
How about now?
There you go.
All right. I want to take this opportunity on behalf of the Board of Education to thank the citizens of Woodland Park for your support of students and teachers of the Woodland Park School District. You voted, your votes on two A to retain the one point oh nine sales tax is very much appreciated. Your vote has made it possible for the Woodland Park School District to continue to attract and retain high quality teachers to our beautiful mountain town. And will ensure that our hardworking students receive the best possible education for their success in the future. Good things are taking place within our district. We will continue to provide the best education possible for your children within the Woodland Park School District. Thank you. Mick Bates.
Thank you Mick. Anyone else Suzanne?
That concludes public comment this evening, mayor.
Thank you. That takes us to item seven unfinished business. We have none. Item eight is ordinances on initial posting and we don't have anything there either. And item nine is public hearings. Item A is approval of ordinance fourteen eighty four, series two thousand twenty four, an ordinance of the Woodland Park City Council imposing a temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing and approval of applications for the establishment of a business that cultivates processes or dispenses natural medicine and the establishment of any business occupation or operation for healing centers. And this is Mr. Williams, Mr. Wilson. Sorry.
Call me whatever you want.
Just don't delay for dinner.
That's right. Mayor and council, you've, you're familiar with this moratorium proposal. This is an outgrowth of the General Assembly and an initiative that they were implementing, which makes this, this sort of facility a use by right in our jurisdictions. We are prohibited from saying no. This moratorium will give us an opportunity in Woodland Park to put the legal infrastructure in place to permit license and cite these things within our land use power. It's a six month moratorium. Leave and that's it.
Thank you, council questions? Yes, Jeff.
Yeah. Yeah, just this Jeff, but but to be clear, we can lift the moratorium whenever we want, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Suzanne.
Mayor. I just wanted to tell the council, they will remember this, but also the public that we're planning in January to have a work session on this topic. So we will bring that to the public and to the council in January. It'll be the second meeting, we'll host a work session on this.
Thank you Suzanne. Counsel, any further questions of staff? Before I open the public hearing. Okay, then I will up, up, open the public comment portion of this public hearing. Suzanne, do we have anyone signed up to address the council?
We do, we do mayor, we have Jason Friesma would like to speak and I'll have Eric promote Jason. And then you can go ahead, Jason.
Jason, when you get there and you unmute yourself, would you please just give us your full name and your town of residence?
Yeah, hello, I'm Jason Friesman. I live in Woodland Park, Colorado. I just wanted to speak on this. It does sound like I am really heartened to hear that there is a work session around this. That was going to be one of my comments was just to ask for some openness by the council. I would love to share, you know, further my expertise and then also my experiences with this. And the only other thing that I did want to add, as we are considering what a healing center may or may not look like in Woodland Park. I was actually having coffee at Starbucks. I think it was on Monday or Tuesday this week. And my friend Steve and I were talking about kind of plans for the business. And we actually had somebody come up and talk to us who is actually a first responder here in town and share kind of his experiences also with psychedelic assisted therapy. And one of the things he said that I thought was so important was that when he, when he sought out treatment and help honestly for suicidal ideation, he was surprised at how professional he was treated and that, and how nice the facility was. And I think his surprise really spoke to me because I do think when we, I just want to say the part that when we force people to kind of get help in secret or in hiding and we don't kind of allow people to seek help in public, it does add, I think, a lot to the shame of it. And it also causes people to not seek out help when it is, when it is in their best interest to seek help. So I think that's all I have for this, but I do, I look forward to the work session and I'd be happy to share anything else at that time or come prepared. Yeah, Suzanne, is that you?
Yes, Jason, I did want to tell you the city manager and I had, we thought we would see you tonight in person had we not gone remote. And we did want to talk to you and make sure you know that we'd like to have you as one of our special guests that have the work session. So I will reach out to you as to the time and the date of that work session so you can plan accordingly.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds great. Do you want me to bring mushrooms? I'm just kidding, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Look forward to the conversation.
As do I, thank you.
Anyone else Suzanne?
No ma'am.
Thank you. All right, council, any questions of staff? Otherwise I'd be looking, I will close the public hearing, I'm sorry. A portion of this public hearing, the public comment portion of this public hearing and Carol.
My question for the staff and possibly for Jeff is, do we know what Teller County is doing in regard to healing centers? And will we include them in our work session?
I don't know, but I'd be happy to look, look into it, of course. I just don't know off the top of my head.
Aaron's had a conversation, yeah.
They haven't currently done anything at this point, but we certainly could include them in the conversation.
Okay, all right.
But I think Aaron, Aaron, just, just to be clear, because I, you, you gave a readout on this. It's, it's not that they haven't done anything, they don't feel like they need to do anything.
Right, they don't feel like they need to do anything to prohibit them because they don't feel like they could currently be in allowed use. However, they have not taken an official stance on them.
Right.
Thank you. Anything else counsel? All right, I would look for a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance on its first reading.
It's actually public hearing.
Excuse me, move to approve the ordinance.
Thank you Carol.
I'll second.
Thank you Catherine. Any further conversation or questions counsel? All right Suzanne.
Nakai.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith. Steve, can you unmute and just give me an affirmative? Or just give me a thumbs up?
Yes. Yeah.
Case.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries six zero.
Thank you counsel. That takes us to, well, item nine B, which is going to be removed from this agenda and rescheduled for twenty, November twenty first meeting at the request of the applicant, I believe, right Suzanne?
It was, it's actually as the request of your city clerk, it was an incomplete file.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Let's consider that at our next meeting.
Okay.
So item ten is new business and we have nothing, which takes us to item eleven reports. And let me get. The PPAC board meeting is this next week, so at our next meeting, I should have some things to report for you. Bear with me counsel. While I get to. There it is. Forgive me. There it is, I have it now. All right, council, community events for November seventh through November twenty first. Friday, November eighth from seven P. M. To nine P. M. Is stand up comedy at the U Pass Cultural Center. Come for a hilarious evening of live comedy at the UPCC. The show is a ticketed event for eighteen years and older. Prime Kitchen Food Truck will be serving food and doors and the UPCC bar open at six P. M. And it is open seating. Monday, November eleventh at five P. M., the American Legion Post nineteen eighty will be hosting a Veterans Day dinner at the U Pass Cultural Center main room. This is a free dinner for veterans and veterans families. Music guest at the UPCC main, sorry, music guest is Ray Demir's with special guest Zen, Zine Gurley. The doors open at four thirty. Wednesday, November thirteenth at the U Pass Cultural Center from six P. M. To eight P. M. Is the Free Community Concert featuring Pippa's Fling. Founded by Woodland Park residents, their set lists include favorite jazz standards of yesteryear as well as their own modern composition performed with a vintage twist. Prime Kitchen Food Truck will be available again and the U Pass Cultural Center bar will be open. And finally, Thursday, November fourteenth, the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce is hosting a lunch and learn event. AI for the everyday entrepreneur boosting business with smart tech at the U Pass Cultural Center from eleven thirty A. M. To one P. M. Facilitator is Brandon Lee and registration is required with the chamber. That is all I have, Mayor Pro Tim Nakai.
Mayor.
Yes.
Real quick, our staff just notified us because of the weather conditions, they've just canceled the comedy show for tomorrow night.
All right.
I want to just let everybody know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Friday, November. And Friday, November 8th, that comedy show at the Cultural Center is canceled due to weather. All right, Catherine?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Woodland Park citizens for coming out and voting on 2A and continuing to support our schools and kids.
Is that all?
That's all I got.
Thank you, Catherine. Next, we have, let's see, who comes next? Jeff Gere?
Yeah, so Parks and Recreation nominate your favorite 2024 Woodland Park Parks and Recreation Coach on the Parks and Recreation website or Facebook by November 12th, and vote for your favorite candidate November 12th through the 20th on the Parks and Recreation website or, or Facebook. And then for the Woodland Aquatic Center of Deep Water Fitness, we have a new instructor, Keely, that is on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 5:30 to 6:30 PM, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Next, we have Carol Harvey.
Yes, thank you. A couple of comments about my role as the military liaison for the council. On Monday, it actually had been scheduled for the 7th yesterday, but was postponed until Monday. The Colorado Christian, or Colorado Springs Christian School is going to have a veterans' recognition service beginning at, I think it's beginning at 8:30, but that's a breakfast that's open only to veterans and their families. But then they have a program following that, and I will be presenting some information for the group there early in the morning. And I think there's also, I, I'm not sure of the time, but I think it's also on Monday morning. The school district will also be recognizing our veterans, and if there's someone out there who has that time, certainly appreciate it. And then on the 12th, Tuesday, the mayor, myself, and the city manager, along with a previous city manager, David Butterey, will be meeting with the commander of the 4th Engineer Battalion at Fort Carson and talk about our relationship with that, that particular unit. And then also to remind Aaron of my ask to, at least at the end of this meeting, explain the very detailed expense report that was published with today's package. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. George?
Yeah, I, one thing, and that's DDA. We met this Tuesday, and we, John Gamilke rolled out the draft, if you will, of the micro grant program that's coming up, and that was then turned over to DDA Legal. So we'll look forward to getting that more official over time. I believe that it's going to be, I think the timing of this is, we're trying to get it ready for January to execute and then close it in March.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
I guess, kind of like Carol's comment, sorry, I was pointing the screen. One of the things I'd like to get an update from the city on is, and Aaron, I know you and I talked about this, I'm glad Kip's there, is the hazmat remediation effort. So if we can do that during the city report, that'd be great.
Thank you, George. Steve?
Well, to begin with, I'd like to, you know, reach out to, you know, councilperson, you know, Cherry Baldwin on her recovery, on her surgery. It's been very different and stressful, stressful for her, as I also went through a surgery on Monday. So, you know, heartfelt and meditation out to her, you know, for her. I know she really wanted to be on this tonight, but, you know, talking with her and keeping in constant contact with her. She is in a lot of pain and, you know, such with it. But, you know, otherwise, you know, for, you know, Councilman Gere, I wouldn't throw out there for Aaron Vassalati for Coach of the Year for Fight Football. I wouldn't, I can't give you any report because of my surgery on Monday for the HPC because I couldn't make the meeting. But otherwise, you know, I think I'm good.
Thank you, Steve. Staff, Aaron? I know, wait a minute, hold everything. The most, we forgot the most important, Jeff Wilson.
Hardly the most important. I don't have any report. Everybody drive safe. You'll be pleased to hear I do not have a successor to the crowbar joke. That's it for me.
Thanks, Jeff. Aaron?
All right, the city of Woodland Park Citizens Academy is back. So get ready to dive deep into the heart of our city through hands-on activities and exciting behind-the-scenes tours of our facilities. Applications for the 2025 Citizens Academy opened on Monday and will be accepted through Friday, December 20th. Please act fast. We have limited spots available. I think we already had 11 people apply, so we're excited to have a full class this time. So get your applications in. We're also speaking, seeking sponsorships from any area businesses that would like to sponsor this, and thanks for the continued generosity of our local supporters. We've offered this program free for residents, and we hope to do the same for our upcoming sessions starting in January. So please reach out to us if you're interested. Website redesign. I think many of you have been tracking this, but we recently switched to a .gov from our .org, which is the highest level that a government can achieve in terms of a website domain. So we are very excited about that. We've been working on this as a staff for eight months. And the city was pleased to share the unveiling of a refreshed website with the community. Our website went through a strategic and comprehensive redesign resulting in a fully accessible website, the city above the clouds. Along with the new look, you can find us at our new address, which is woodlandpark.gov. So we were able to get the official Woodland Park, which is pretty awesome. Now, to go to the comments on the reports, as part of the redesign process, we were not putting content up on the website for the last several months. So I will have to look back and see what it is that's missing on there because I do believe that we have completed all the reports and presented them at council. But it's, it seems that they're not listed on the website, so we will get that remedied. We do every month produce a statement of expenditures, and we are current with that. I believe we're also current with the sales tax update. And I'll, I think we did the last one as part of our budget presentation, which is why it may not have been in the packet the way it normally is. And at our next meeting, we will definitely give the next sales tax update. So those are the comments I have on the reports. We will make sure that everything is posted on the website as soon as possible. And then I'm going to turn over to Sue's to give an election, not an election.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it is, it's.
Well, yeah, kind of. Counsel, what I'm looking for this evening is to see if counsel has the appetite to start up a charter review committee. I have a folder that I keep here in my office of different things that citizens talk to me about or that counsel may approach me about, different things in the charter they'd like to see changed. So what we've done in the past is we started Charter Review Committee generally a year before the election. So we would start it in January, and we'd go to the following January, and then we would be ready, if anyone wanted to put any of these on the ballot, they'd be ready to go on the ballot. And what the charter committee looks like usually is two citizens. They have to be residents of the city of Woodland Park because it's the city's charter, and they need to be able to vote on it. Two residents, two council members, the city manager, myself, and the city attorney. I wanted to see if counsel has an appetite for this, and if they do, I would start that advertising to the citizens in December. So hopefully counsel can appoint citizens to the committee, and we can begin in January. So I'm just looking for some feedback.
Thank you, Suzanne. Steve?
I would be privileged to do so.
Well, right now, right now, I'm just looking for whether counsel has a stomach or appetite for me to start advertising for citizens, and then counsel, in a public meeting, you guys will make your appointments to what council members you'd like to serve on the committee. I just want to know if you want me to put it out there to the citizens.
I have a very big appetite, and you know, I'm always for our citizens.
Okay, Jeffrey?
Yeah, I honestly don't have a strong opinion about it one way or the other, so I would consent with the rest of counsel.
Thank you. George?
I was looking to see if Catherine was going to jump in here and go off mute. So I would, I'd like to defer to Catherine because she's, I think, the queen of the charter.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't done it in a couple of years, and historically, we seem to do it every other election. And so I think it's probably a good time to do it since we didn't do it two years ago.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Carol?
Yeah, I'm in.
Um, sure.
Okay.
We support it since I just. Carol, you don't have to be on the committee. I just, I will just make this advisement upfront. A lengthy number of charter amendments is not the best way to go. You need to pick and choose what's most relevant to the community right now. And I know that there are a couple of hot-button issues like residency for qualification to run for city council. But having done this more than once, I would just advise anyone who decides they want to be on this committee to, to make sure you're focused on what the community really wants. And then first and foremost, less is more. Yep, agreed.
Yep.
Mayor, with the consensus of counsel, I will start advertising this, these two positions to citizens at large, and then bring them to council in January for appointments.
Sounds great, Suzanne. It sounds like you have the support of the whole council.
Thank you. The second item, the second item I just wanted to talk to counsel about is we hopefully will be passing the city budget at the December 5th council meeting. I just wanted to plant a seed that perhaps we can cancel the December 19th meeting if the budget passes and we're done with city business for the year. So just planting that seed to think about it at the next council member, council meeting. I'll ask you for official to cancel it.
Thank you. It is typically what we do because we're finished with the budget and our business is complete, and it always seems to fall very near Christmas. And I know lots of us travel to be with family. And it just, if we can make it happen, we will, and we'll see how that falls out next meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Kip can give an update on the field spill.
Okay.
With the work of our attorney, we did send out a letter, I'll say, a month ago to the company to get their permits submitted. They have submitted for their permits. I have not reviewed those submittals yet, but it is underway, I'm told at this point, so.
Okay, thank you, Kip.
Anything else, counsel? Well, with that, I'm going to adjourn this Zoom meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye.